I'm a little OCD.
Why you putting that one back here like that?
Yeah, that wasn't been.
Put all ours back in his drawer.
November twentieth and the second one should have been December sixth.
You want some chocolate?
Do you have?
We'll give up. I sure as shit walk by them.
We're gonna change everything. I'm changing something right now.
When you're hanging pictures this year, I get nuts.
I'm reading a magazine she's driving us. When you get through that, don't lay it down. Just throw it away or put it out.
I'm not.
Not quite that bad.
I'll walk by and I'll start. Especially when my grandkids there, I mean, I want, and I have learned now, they'll leave and then get it done.
Done then. But leaving like that until they leave is a chore.
How did the hearing go?
Oh, it was supposed to be. No fireworks.
Uncle, Grandpa didn't show up?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I believe he did.
He get, he get handcuffed to leg?
Well, I'm not sure, it's a, some duty. I'll probably spend a little time after a beer in here. I just went through.
Sometimes that's best.
Sometimes it's like being married.
Resting here and two, three down in the basement and taking people in and out, paying the owner.
Takes two hours.
Which closed off three of the entries at noon time. So, but there, if everything agreed to, wasn't any issues. And there was, it was a whole lot less attended than what I was expecting. I expected a big crowd. Four, five, six extras. Where'd he end up at? Jensen. Six twelve months and another, another twelve months on. Condition relates. To his uncle, please. If he can't use, that's against the law.
If he don't, then he can serve more time. I need a military school for him.
Yeah, I need military academy.
It's kind of what that is.
So, need the military academy sounds like to me. A little distance, might build some fences around there.
I think it's pretty structured up there. I believe it's kind of, that's what they call boot camp. Semi military style.
That's good. Restrictive, not abusive, I can't think.
It was busy here Friday.
Were you crazy?
Was it? People trying to get a life thing done, last minute?
Let me say, I was busy because it was vacation that day. I had, I did some things that I normally don't do.
It was a learning curve.
Okay, well, last night seemed like Sunday night to anybody else.
Thank you, today seems like Monday.
Yeah, it does.
But just think we just had.
It's Sunday night, yeah.
Three days.
That looks like someone started all over again.
Groundhog Day, hell with that.
I feel like Groundhog Day every day.
Did you do some walking today?
Yes, I did.
What about you?
While you were talking?
She's pretty slick.
There's mine.
Didn't hold him out, did you?
Wish you luck.
Wave it front.
You won't wave it in? Tell me when to hit it.
You post that here?
There it is. Just under the range.
There it is.
A little short.
You're about three foot out of range right there.
You think you carried it from the left?
You think.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Young County Commissioners Court setting an irregular meeting, uh, December the twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. It is nine thirty-four AM. Make note that this, uh, meeting is posted in the manner for the time required. The Commissioner Pruitt is, uh, not present. Other than that, the all necessary inform is available. We'll carry on business. Say it's, uh, we'll stand and have a plea. In case.
Yes.
I just pray. Most great Father, thank you for this day, thank you for this privilege to live in this great, wonderful nation of ours. Thank you for this community which we serve. Thank you for the men and women in uniform and the law enforcement officials that keep evil away from our doors and protect us each and every day. Thank you for the many blessings. Please give, uh, comfort to those who are grieving and those who are still today. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and to do your will. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Item number three, um, I don't really have anything on there, but we might comment about our, courthouse holiday meal. It was very well attended and plenty big spread. I don't know, there's some maybe I missed.
Well, I apologize for missing it. I was at a four inch appreciation luncheon that day.
Yes, Penny said, we realized it was the same day and I said, I would have come today because.
I went because I knew that it might be a little under attended.
Yes, we're good.
So, anyway, it was nice, might be the largest one we've had in a long time.
We're lucky.
Haven't had one of those every year, but I think for the last five or six we have.
That's good.
Brand variety of things, plenty of it. We gave Robert Dahl a memento for his second retirement. Although he's worked, this will be four years he's worked as that, as all of his years since.
Then they had his other state's state of charmers.
Yeah, cooking turkeys at Masonic Lodge on Friday.
Oh, we missed.
We got to visit with him a good bit about it. Tony Widner at his reception.
Yes, Tony and I went out there for a little bit, which was very nice, lots of folks out there.
Yeah, I didn't get to go to that, probably were a little busy here.
They were cooking turkeys, but he showed up afterwards to help us clean up the turkeys.
Oh, good, good. It was very nice.
Um, other than that, uh, our swearing ceremony is set for eleven AM on Monday, the thirty-first. To get all reelected or newly elected officials authorized to assume the duties of full term or an unexpired term. Is there anything else that we need to make?
No, anybody cares here, we're gonna be starting the renovation on the grape barter on January seventh. Anybody cares to watch that sausage being made?
I've noticed out there that, uh, cannons seem to be sitting on the dock or in the same place it was, might have four decks. It shouldn't be cooked up and taken back over there where it can be observed and it wouldn't hurt to have a
Yeah, we really need a structure for it to put in.
Go over it, semi protected.
I think he waxing it and oiling the wood marks to keep it more.
I think they back over there where, I know they're just talk about rejuvenating that old cannon that's sitting out there.
Yes. I saw that cannon this past weekend and she wore a yellow ribbon. That little cannon is sitting on one of the scenes of that particular movie of John Wayne.
It was John Wayne that way.
Exactly the same, that was in that Ford, exactly the same color. That, that light blue and it looks just like that one sitting out there from, from distance. That one up there is maybe some more modern materials, but.
It'd be good if the dockers hook back up to its, um, lumber or tinder or whatever they call that, uh, apparatus that it pulls.
Chasing?
Lumber, I think they're called.
Is that what they call the lumber?
But shouldn't be put back over there where it can be in good sight.
Where it's sitting on the corner with their firing?
Is that what it says?
Where they were firing the cannons, is that where it's still sitting?
That's where it's still sitting, or well, right, I think it's right there.
Need to be put back over there?
It should be put back over there to, where it can be observed a little bit closer. Somebody back up there to drive off with it.
I'll talk to him this afternoon, we're mapping the grape barbers, so I'll mention that, he needs to do that.
Okay, item number four, consider county clerk minutes previous meeting, that being December the tenth and December the twentieth, twenty eighteen. Are there any additions, deletions or corrections that need to be made to either of those?
That's all been made, that's been made. Done been made. Still move.
I'll second that.
Motion of Commissioner Wiley and Second Commissioner Sykes to approve those minutes as presented, uh, that being December the tenth and December the twentieth. All in favor? Looked at four to zero. Consider financial reports, do we have a report to make, Anne?
No, sir.
No action there? Consider auditor budget amendments and voucher payable out of number.
No, I always have something to say now.
Money goes.
Uh, today's vouchers, no budget amendments. Today's vouchers total is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars and seventeen cents. And out of the general is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one fifty-eight seventy-one. Um, included in that is our first payment to the tax appraisal office for fifty-six thousand and our workers' comp is twelve thousand seven hundred, so that's some of the big ones.
So, why would we go with vouchers from that side? Motion by Commissioner Wiley and Second Commissioner Rogers to approve the vouchers payable as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero.
Also, um, Guardian has finished up now. I said they got finished today with all the painted buttons and everything, so I'm gonna need to pay their invoices. The two I have, one of them is eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-three and the other one is twenty-one thousand, twenty dollars. Um, and so there's eleven thousand in courthouse security, we don't wanna wipe that out. Need to leave some in there because take this out, now they put to the general every year. Uh, we could pay a portion of it out there if we wanted to and then.
Have we put the ten in it already from last year?
Yes, yeah. Eleven thousand.
You can generate very much more coming down into the year.
It doesn't. How much do you, it only takes a hundred a month then.
What, what revenues come into the courthouse security?
Cannon clerk, district clerk, JP's from tickets.
About how much?
I don't know how much, but I think about three hundred a month probably, four hundred.
Pretty much, thirty-five hundred without a dollar a year. Well, let's just do, uh.
Did, how did?
I'd say do five thousand.
Anything to do with that?
No. We were hoping to get it finished sooner if there was anything left, but really we didn't, so contingency would be the only thing. I mean, we could do five thousand out of courthouse security and maybe the rest out of contingencies.
So, there's eleven thousand in courthouse security?
Yes.
Over one invoice, the small invoice out of that.
Well, you can, if we don't have enough at the end of the year, we just won't be able to move it in there. I could look and see how much total we had left. Because we, you know, we moved that ten thousand out at the end of the year, but that still wouldn't leave us enough, I mean, all that we would do is short the general pay in that ten thousand we put in from courthouse security and our revenue.
But we could always reimburse it at the end of the year.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this thing, thing can be done later down the road.
Good, yeah, write a check out of contingency later and move it into there if we don't have enough.
Pay me now, pay me later thing.
What's that small invoice?
Uh, eight thousand, seven ninety-three, so pay that one out of, out of courthouse security.
Leave with three thousand dollars in the courthouse security.
And the other one is twenty-one thousand, oh-two-oh and pay that one out of contingency. Okay.
Still move.
Sounds like a plan and then if we need money to move later, we'll just write a check.
Money movement later.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wiley and Second Commissioner Rogers to, um, apply eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars to Guardian Security from our courthouse security fund. And subsequently twenty-one thousand and twenty dollars of, from our contingency fund for courthouse security measures that have been taken over the last two, three months.
Okay, do you think, I, I guess I can pay off of these invoices, although they're dated November, nothing should have changed.
No, not so.
They said we'll go ahead and pay all of this and then if we run short to move that money, we'll write a check out of contingency. We get about eleven thousand a year, I think.
Eleven thousand, where we go?
But if not, we'll write a check out of contingency and.
Look, we'll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. Okay, these auditors are all.
I guess.
Final. We've got a bunch of things right under here, though, that's under considered. That's, item number nine, considering土地 bonds. Those bonds being for Andy Day, Stan Mailer, Andy Day, ten thousand, Stan Mailer, thirty, five thousand, James N. Hammond, five thousand, Marcia Sumter, five thousand, John Z. Bullock, one hundred thousand.
He's a risk, he's a high risk.
Is that enough?
That's a percent, I think that's, that's big forty.
Thank you.
Nice round. Jamie Freeze Land at twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, excuse me.
Christopher D. Baron at twenty-five hundred. And is that particular bond, is that a new bond or is that a continuing thing?
I think it's continuing, isn't it? I've got them all here, I have everyone's except Judge Bullock's.
And then, uh, Timmy, uh, Timmy Hall. Five thousand. Spencer Key for five thousand. Jason L. Hearn for five thousand. Kate Harden for fifteen thousand. Matt Pruitt for three thousand and Jimmy R. Wiley for three thousand. We also have a bond on our constable free that's a continuing thing because of the unexpired term provision there, which was taken out in the middle term and it's gonna continue to the end of that term.
I move we approve these bonds as presented in total?
I'll second that. Have you got your bond yet?
We've got it paid for.
They sent the bill, but they didn't send the bond.
Send the bill, but they didn't.
While you were reading that, your staff person was saying, we didn't get yours.
I checked this morning.
She's got tenants that's found off there once.
Yeah, well, if she does, makes noise, we're gonna approve it anyway, I say. It'll be here, it'll be here.
Yes, they told, we told them we needed it.
Was that for Sykes, Wiley or Wiley's?
That's Wiley, that's Wiley.
We're gonna have a motion by Commissioner Sykes, Second Commissioner Wiley to approve of the, uh, bonds referenced herein, all of which are either, uh, reelected or newly elected or employee bonds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry four, oh. You have over there?
I do, all except, um, Matt Pruitt needs signing ands and Judge Mayers.
Okay, you've got approval on backs of the bonds. Mr. Lee.
Have you signed yours yet?
Probably ought to clarify that motion a little bit because of.
I'll sign that.
Stacy wanna have one of those?
Daly, Mailer, Bullock, Land, Baron, Hall, Spencer Key, Hearn, Kate Harden will all be approved by the court. And then, Commissioner Pruitt and Commissioner Wiley will be approved by me. So, we'll have that motion for those and then I'll, I'll provide my approval for the other day. That may be my preparation and signature or whatever.
I already got mine signed, so.
I think we'll we'll have all of, we'll have all of anybody here available.
He couldn't get in my office to drop this stuff?
Oh, he didn't. Oh, he did, okay. Here's the other, um, except ands and Matt Pruitt's and Judge Mayers. And then, okay.
Where's mine?
Sherry has it. If you'll get all of those, okay.
And then.
She's got yours and Matt's and Mayers.
All in favor of approving all those bonds that were with the, the exceptions to that motion is gonna be, um, Matt Pruitt, Jimmy R. Wiley, which will be approved.
Aren't we basically just approving the expenditure for the premium of those and then issuing on whatever the standard rents of issuance would be? Which would mean that you issued those five too.
I tend to buy for the bonds, all the payments.
That's fine, we're, we're approving the expenditure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. Okay, we've got item number ten is to ratify the order council reported of subsidies and then the bathroom values and gene.
We haven't moved it done?
We did that, but I don't know that we had that
document.
I don't think we actually had the order, uh, at that time. The order's in the package.
It's over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four, oh, ratification. Um, discuss, consider local government officers conflict and disclosure statements, those are submitted, um, by Commissioner Jimmy R. Wiley. Eleven A is Roy's Recycling LLC and B, Nettle Tire LLC. Those could be businesses that Mr. Wiley or close family member of one of the two would have an interest in it. They're disclosing that and they're all, I think they're individuals provided here in their hands.
I'll move that we approve the recognition of those conflicts of disclosure.
That would be, so, I say Rogers.
I'll start.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, oh, one. Nobody in this for while is installing vocal on conflicts.
We've got hurricane coming.
Blow pretty strong.
Yeah, they are.
Item number twelve, I got a call this morning that, um, they're gonna do that in a different kind of a way and, um, so with item number twelve, we'll take no action on, be no consideration at this time.
You gonna do trimming or?
Yeah.
Well, it would be, I was pursuant to trimming on courthouse grounds here, trees, things like that. I think that's still gonna happen, probably, but it due to some things that they think that they've discovered that can't it won't be applicable from the individual straight to the, you know, it's gonna have to be to a different organizations and so on.
That's true, that organization.
Should I call the, uh, arborist consultant and tell him not to worry about coming to visit or?
Yeah, uh, at this.
This time or whenever. I asked him about why he would charge us to come do that, he was gonna do it for free, so we might want to let him go ahead and come.
Well.
Write us up a, write us up a consultant thing, we have it on file.
He'll do it.
Mr. Greg David out of Montague County is an arborist consultant. He doesn't actually do the cutting of trees.
He doesn't do this?
No.
Agrarife?
Yeah, he's, he's got some connection with agrarife, that's how I got his name and number. And he, he writes up a plan and talks to you about the, the condition of your trees and what should be done to them and that kind of thing, so.
Well, we welcome recommendations.
If it, if it's a freebie, well, I like so. Just want the chief gentleman to know that he is coming to the courthouse to do that.
With the store, approval of the donated funds or anything like that, that'll be that'll be at a different time, they're gonna go through some of the, kind of, that. Item number thirteen, is discuss, consider requesting or receiving applications for the appointment of a veterans service officer, that's attached to the letter that, um, Wayne McAlton submitted, um, indicating that he wished to depart by March the first, March the thirty-first, I believe it is, of this coming year, um, about the assist and training a new person to do that. And I suggest that we advertise for applications through the month of January. I think, uh, what did I write, I wrote a letter, I bet I didn't get that, yeah, I got it here.
Mm, sure did.
It'll be three, four PM Friday, January the first. Uh, got a suggested letter there. If anybody next, uh, looked through and said they might make any changes or if you want to advertise this soon.
Thank you, too, same there, bye. Can I take a walk?
Then I'll move that we, um.
Says here, we taking them till four PM on February the first?
Excuse me?
February the first?
February the first, four PM, February the first.
Do you want to just use that generic, um, application we have or if they have a resume also?
Well, the real resume would be good, if they have. Well, yeah, a resume would be good if they have one. Obviously, they're good with eighty-nine, so some people might actually create a formal resume, but that would be good if they had one. If you're on, can build one.
We put a notice of job opening on our website or something such as that?
Yeah, we, we'll post it on website and we'll also advertise it. Two little papers, a time or two.
Are you gonna do that or you only put this in the paper? You have it in there?
Advertising, yeah. And we'll have it on website. And it will be for personal distributing. Distributing if somebody calls in or wants to get that application. So we're required to be a veteran of one of our military branches, honorably discharged. In several, a few other things.
Some cases could be a spouse or...
Could be, yeah. Some cases could be providing spouse of one or a living spouse.
Over.
I just, I just hope to...
I'll second that.
To run up the quality that we have and enjoy for our veterans, of course.
We've been very blessed.
I don't know. We've got three real good ones. Okay, that's... Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Sykes? S two, request applications for our VSO, county VSO officer and receive applications through, it was four p.m. on Friday, February the first. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry four zero. Did you sign?
I did.
You're writing it. Maybe, maybe there might not be necessary, you're ready to consider the burn fixings.
Done so. A little bit forecast for next week too.
Get colder, man.
You guys are anything, you get a little bit of business connected, this has been the last formal meeting of the...
Get your supplement.
Supplement. Uh-oh, I'll put that together myself. Yeah. We can adjourn, Bill, then.
This is very important for us.
This came in. This came in on me. I'll get this. Okay, S one, supplemental agenda, item S one, to consider Young County Historical Commission appointments, reappointments for the term January one, twenty nineteen through twelve, thirty-one, twenty twenty. They have list of those that was sent over by Susan, Susan Chameau. They did numbered those, they're somewhere around twenty. And...
I make a motion to reappoint those that are already listed there.
A motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by... I'll second Rogers. To appoint. Reappoint. Or reappoint. Membership submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, that's going in blue. We talked about twenty-nine, thirty. Members, a couple or two or three of them being planned by...
I don't, I don't mind Mr. Monroe being on there, but how did someone from Jack County end up being on the Young County story? One time he was in...
We can have a member. New York State, I guess. We have to have seven members from Young County. That's necessary.
At least seven.
At least seven.
I just thought he might be an interesting story, especially having an address like Berry Dairy Road.
Yeah, there's a requirement for seven members. There must be seven members to create a commission from the county.
Everything good.
But other than that, I don't think there's any restriction on membership. Item number S two, consider Young County Resolution, number zero six five. Actually, I made a mistake, there's sixty-five, I missed one somewhere. FY twenty nineteen, it's...
Sixty-six.
We've done this resolution before at the past legislative session regarding under, un or underfunded mandates. I'll put that together and think it's quite functional for Young County without... So we create, there's got several numbers in there that you can see that add up to a considerable amount of necessary expenditures that we're...
Do we have, we have verifiable data for the numbers? I would move that we pass resolution in opposition of unfunded, to unfunded mandates. Number sixty-five, is that correct?
Number sixty-five.
Mm-hmm.
FY twenty nineteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, that, that motion. Sykes. And that, I'll include that with delivering to our representative senator. And include C.C.'s to our district association county.
Absolutely.
Council for our community association. Second by Commissioner Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Now, is there anything else? Discuss, consider, fully. We can sign these four bucks this way.
Shirley Hawkins funeral will be two o'clock prior.
It, uh...
Oh, three thirty.
Oh, that other one, just, Brooke, you're running off that one?
Yes, she did. Her funeral tomorrow, two o'clock, first at church. Leave that to her, I can speak with her.
Non-verbal communication?
Eighty-one years old.
I didn't realize she...
Died at her desk, who would've thought it?
Something she did every day. She got there about six o'clock and she'd take her little mouse.
Good. Where she would've wanted to go.
Yep.
Did a good job with those folks for a lot of years.
She could take a little ivory.
Yeah, she...
Did she?
I believe so.
I think if we can get Mark to sign it.
I'm on it, Jim.
It's right here.
I'm on it, Jim.
No.
All right. Thomas, that mandate issue is going to be an important and contentious issue in this next session.
Yes.
Kind of keep an eye on it. Kind of a David and your life struggle.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have Commissioner Wiley making most adjourned?
Over. I'll move, Mr. Pruitt, I'll second that. Being present.
Okay, Mr. Sykes, did you second that motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
We've conducted government's business for another year.
Kate, I'll get you copies.
Okay, we're off, we're off there. We're off the block.
If you guys took any pictures when you were going out to church?
I'll send some to you.
Yeah, it was quite crazy on Friday.
Oh, I understand.
All right.
I knew what you were doing here.
Yeah, it was crazy on Friday, so we'd get, we'd get one paper out on Thursday. I'd say we'd get another paper out.
Are you all back in sync again now? Next week?
No, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, we're gonna get two papers out this week again and then it's back.
That's hard. Yeah, I'll get something, Dean.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.